We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the recording of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we should be able to vote. Will the voting be...oh, there we go. Voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
Mayor, I vote yes, it's not registering.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
I vote twice.
Well, that's because Alderwoman Purchase isn't voting, so that's why we let you do that. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'm just being funny. I don't know why you're on there twice. So the motion passes with nine voting, yes. One not present. And I don't know why you're on there twice. I was just kidding you, I hope you know that.
No, yeah, yeah.
She wasn't in her seat, so.
All right.
Agenda...keep that up, she says. She likes seven, two votes. Agenda item number 2025-247 and 2025-281 remain tabled or in committee, and I don't see any reason for movement unless anyone from the council sees movement for those. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is item number 2025-387. Ignorance Accepting and Authorizing Contract PD 2608-27 with Mar Brothers Ford Incorporated for the Purchase and Delivery of Two Ford Mavericks for an Amount Not to Exceed $60,570 for the Springfield Police Department. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2025-387 on final passage.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, then the motion or voting will now be open. Alderwoman Natriano, I know that you're only voting one time, so you're all good. And so the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council at this time from the council members?
Quick meeting.
Seeing none, is there any new business from the council members to come before the council? All right, then we're going to move on to advance requests to address the council. Clerk Redpath, you're in charge.
James Johnson. James Johnson. Bob Emo.
Good evening, my name is Bob Emo. I live in Ward Three. I'm also a member of ICON, the Independent Coalition of Our Neighborhoods. I want to give you a vocabulary lesson tonight. The meaning of communication. The dictionary defines it as "the process of importing and exchanging information, thoughts, feelings, or ideas between a sender and a receiver to achieve mutual understanding." Now, for the most part, I will say that this horseshoe has done a good job of communication. With one exception, the mayor's office. The mayor has listed these community connections, which I think is a wonderful idea, but I can tell you, looking at the faces, only two wards have had these community connections, and I can guarantee you, the remaining city council members do not know when their ward meeting is going to take place. Mayor, I beg you, please post a list in public of all of your community connection meetings. I honestly think that having ward meetings would be a benefit to the entire city, whether they're monthly, bimonthly. Now, one city council member came up to me and said, "Oh, but we have neighborhood association meetings that I attend." Well, that's all fine and good, but guess what? Where I live is not part of a neighborhood association. So therefore, I really think that ward meetings, whether they're monthly, whether they're bimonthly, is a necessity for communication. In addition, with communication, I'd like to know, are you taking notes? Are you making those outcomes public as to what's coming about at these ward meetings? Also, while we're on the topic of communications, I'd like to address the police chief. Now, I understand Police Chief Beal's new in this position, but we used to have coffee with a cop. Great idea, a great way to communicate with the police department. No list of them. I have asked multiple times, "When is coffee with a cop?" I don't know. Well, Police Chief Beal, I beg of you, please come up with a list at least for the upcoming years so that we can have those and people can work around their schedules. So that's all I'm going to leave you. Mayor and city council members, you know how to get ahold of me. I look forward to hearing from you with that list of the community connections meetings and the ward meetings. I look forward to hearing from Police Chief Beal and his department as to when coffee with a cop is going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Williams, my apologies, Alderman.
I just, real quick, wanted to first verify, did you get my emails?
I certainly did, and you said you had no idea when the...when Ward Three's meeting was going to be.
Oh, yes, but I'm speaking to the county part of things, meaning the neighborhood associations. I wanted you to have that information, and I think I shared the two closest neighborhood association?
Deft.
Both of them are defunct.
Correct.
So, just, I thought you was coming last week, but just so that you know, I think you need to contact the Sangamon County Regional Planning, and within their apparatus is the section that handles neighborhood associations, the official listing, because we do things silly with the county like this, and it confuses the citizens. But that's how you'll find out where the neighborhood associations are, which ones was closest to you. I just happen to have knew that, and I do know if you want to start one, because I asked you that as well, we can go...I can show you how to go through the county to get one started with the petition, get the groups together, that type of thing. So I don't want you to think I'm not communicating with you.
No, you're not.
Because once I got...somebody got ahold of me who's an elder to me and jumped me for not communicating with Mr. Bob Emo. And I'm like, hey, I don't wish some...I have been, you know, emailing him back, but it was said that I wasn't, so I wanted to just clear the record so that I'm not on the list with the mayor and the chief.
I will tell you this, as I mentioned, I am a member of ICON, the Independent Coalition of Neighborhoods. We had a meeting last night, that list that you said that Sangamon County is, is not up to date. It has not been updated.
That's why counties shouldn't be doing this type of thing.
That is correct, yes, so we cannot rely on that.
Well, you know, these kind of things happen and start away before me, but I just wanted you to know where I'm coming from.
I understand, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Al. Sarah Al. Eric Cahill.
Hey, council. Coming before you guys again today, regarding immigration's custom enforcement. As some of y'all may know, they're in Chicago. Heavy, heavy in Chicago right now. They conducted a no-knock raid just the other day on an apartment, and took literally every soul out of the apartment at midnight. Flex cuffed a bunch of kids, a bunch of adults, shoved them into Penske vans. Yeah, moving vans. Shoved them into moving vans. Hauled them away. Looked at everybody else, "Hey, do you have a warrant? Because if you do, we're going to arrest you for it." Keep in mind, ICE, as of now, is only allowed to detain based on a federal warrant. They can't pick you up for a warrant for failure to comply. That's illegal. But immigration's custom enforcement hasn't given a crap about legal and illegal. Mayor, I'm urging you. I'm begging you. Stand for the people. Make your...make your constituents feel like they're cared about. So now, they've escalated. They sprayed Chicago Police Department officers with pepper spray. They sprayed cops with pepper spray. Say it one more time, just so we're clear. They sprayed cops with pepper spray. They shot a reporter in the head with a rubber bullet in Chicago. They are swamping Chicago's 911 system with phony 911 calls, making it near impossible for them to deal with the rest of the city. State police is protecting ICE. They're pushing protesters away from the ICE facility's gates in broad view. Not illegal for them to be outside of their gates, by the way. It's inconvenient, but it's not illegal. They have arrested black folks without warrants, put them in flex cuffs, put them in ICE facilities. They're conducting these raids, no-knock raids, in the middle of the night. The one in...the one in Chicago I was talking about kicked off at midnight. Bearcats, for those of you unaware, a bearcat is a tactical vehicle that is up-armored, has a turret. It is just shy of something that we would have used in combat. They're using that. They use a Blackhawk helicopter to put people down on the ground, repelling. They're treating this like they're in Iraq. They're treating this like it's a war zone. Mayor, your people are on the front lines. You should be very much more pissed off than you are, ma'am. But, you know, Texas National Guard is now on the ground in Chicago. As of today, they put boots on the ground. Their plane landed, and they're at the Army Reserve Center in Chicago. Depending on how the lawsuit goes with the federal government, they may be out working as early as tomorrow morning after they get their rolls of engagement and they get their marching orders. Luckily for us, they do not have ammo with their firearms yet, but they will hit an ammo point before they go out. If they do it anything like the border, they won't have the ammo in their weapon. But I don't know that they're going to do it like they did on the border. We don't know anything. We are mushrooms right now. We are kept in the dark and fed crap. ICE is lying through their freaking teeth about things. Openly lying. Are you going to do anything to protect the people, Mayor?
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Are you going to do anything to protect the people, Mayor?
Mayor Bill Cruz-Hine.
Sir, you're only supposed to address the chairwoman. Go ahead and announce the next speaker.
Brianna Day.
Okay, this is going to be a lot of nonsense, because I'm really tired, guys. Being unhoused is exhausting. Okay, so I just, I want to touch on that because of the fact that I was in a trap. I found a place to stay, but I had to work for my place to stay, and it doesn't...they didn't follow labor laws, that's for sure, which just made it even more exhausting. Oh, my gosh. And then on top of that, it's a matter of if you don't do what they say, then you don't have a room to stay in. You don't have a room to stay in, you're out on the street with a kid. So, do you see how people get put into bad situations and they're forced to do things that they don't want to do in order to get their basic needs met? Because it's happening here. And there is...and my case was very, very light. It was a very good case, let me tell you. There are women who are doing way worse things for their basic needs.
I look forward to hearing from you with that list of the community connections meetings and the ward meetings. I look forward to hearing from Police Chief Beal and his department as to when coffee with a cop is gonna be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Oh, sorry. Alderman Williams, my apologies, Alderman.
Uh, I just real quick wanted to, um, first verify, did you get my emails?
I certainly did, and you said you had no idea when the, when Ward Three's meeting was gonna be.
Oh, yes, but I'm speaking to, um, the, um, the, the county part of things, meaning the neighborhood associations. Uh, I, I wanted you to have that information, and I think I shared the, the two closest neighborhood association.
De-funct.
Both of them are de-funct.
Correct.
So, um, just, I thought you was coming last week, but just so that you know, I think you need to contact, uh, the Sangamon County, uh, Regional Planning. And within their apparatus is the section that handles neighborhood associations, the official listing, cause we do things silly with the county like this, and it confuses the citizens, but that's how you'll find out, uh, where the neighborhood associations are, which ones was closest to you. I just happen to have knew that, and I do know if you wanna start one, cause I asked you that as well, um, we can, uh, go, I can show you how to go through the county to, to get one started with the petition, get the groups together, that type of thing. So I don't want you to think I'm not communicating with you.
No, you're not.
Because once I got, somebody got ahold of me who's an elder to me and jumped me for not, um, communicating with Mr. Bob Emo. And I'm like, hey, I don't wish some, I have been, you know, emailing him back, but it was said that I wasn't, so I wanted to just clear the record so that I'm not on the list with the mayor and the chief.
I, I will tell you this, um, as I mentioned, I am a member of ICANN, the Independent Coalition of Neighborhoods. We had a meeting last night, that list that you said that Sangamon County is, is not up to date, it has not been updated.
That's why counties shouldn't be doing this type of thing.
That is correct, yes, so we cannot rely on that.
Well, you know, these kinda things happen and started way before me, but I just wanted you to know where I'm coming from.
I understand, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Al. Sarah Al. Eric Cahill.
Hey, counsel. Coming before you guys again today. Uh, regarding Immigration Customs Enforcement. As some of y'all may know, they're in Chicago. Heavy, heavy in Chicago right now. Um, they conducted a no-knock raid just the other day on an apartment and took literally every soul out of the apartment at midnight. Flex cuffed a bunch of kids, a bunch of adults, shoved them into Penske vans. Yeah, moving vans, shoved them into moving vans, hauled them away. Looked at everybody else, hey, do you have a warrant? Cause if you do, we're gonna arrest you for it. Keep in mind, ICE, as of now, is only allowed to detain based on a federal warrant. They can't pick you up for a warrant for failure to comply. That's illegal. But Immigration Customs Enforcement hasn't given a crap about legal and illegal. Mayor, I'm urging you. I'm begging you. Stand for the people. Make your, make your constituents feel like they're cared about. So now, they've escalated. They sprayed Chicago Police Department officers with pepper spray. They sprayed cops with pepper spray. Say it one more time, just so we're clear. They sprayed cops with pepper spray. They shot a reporter in the head with a rubber bullet in Chicago. They are swamping Chicago's 911 system with phony 911 calls. Making it near impossible for them to deal with the rest of the city. State Police is protecting ICE. They're pushing protesters away from the ICE facility's gates in Broadview. Not illegal for them to be outside of their gates, by the way. It's inconvenient. But it's not illegal. They have arrested black folks without warrants. Put them in flex cuffs. Put them in ICE facilities. They're conducting these raids, no-knock raids, in the middle of the night. The one in, uh, the one in Chicago I was talking about, kicked off at midnight. Bearcats. For those of you unaware, a Bearcat is a tactical vehicle that is up-armored, has a turret. It is just shy of something that we would've used in combat. They're using that, they use a Black Hawk helicopter to put people down on the ground, rappelling. They're treating this like they're in Iraq. They're treating this like it's a war zone. Mayor, your people are on the front lines. You should be very much more pissed off than you are, ma'am. But, you know. Texas National Guard is now on the ground in Chicago, as of today. They put boots on the ground, their plane landed, and they're at the Army Reserve Center in Chicago. Depending on how the lawsuit goes with the federal government, they may be out working as early as tomorrow morning, after they get their rolls of engagement and they get their marching orders. Luckily for us, they do not have ammo with their firearms, yet. But they will hit an ammo point before they go out. If they do it anything like the border, they won't have the ammo in their weapon. But I don't know that they're gonna do it like they did on the border. We don't know anything. We are mushrooms, right now. We are kept in the dark and fed crap. ICE is lying through their freaking teeth about things. Openly lying. Are you gonna do anything to protect the people, Mayor?
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Are you gonna do anything to protect the people, Mayor?
Marybel Cruz-Hine.
What, what an order, Mayor?
Sir, you're only supposed to address the chairwoman. Go ahead and announce the next speaker.
Brianna Day.
Okay, this is gonna be a lot of nonsense, because I'm really tired, guys, being unhoused is exhausting. Um, uh, okay, so I just, I wanna touch on that because of the fact that, um, I was in a trap. Uh, I found a place to stay, but I had to work for my place to stay, and it doesn't, they didn't follow labor laws, that's for sure, um, which just made it even more exhausting. Um, oh my gosh, and then on top of that, it's a matter of if you don't do what they say, then you don't have a room to stay in. You don't have a room to stay in, you're out on the street with a kid. So, do you see how people get put into bad situations and they're forced to do things that they don't wanna do in order to get their basic needs met? Because it's happening here. And there is, and, and my case was very, very light, it was, it was a very good case, let me tell you. There are women who are doing way worse things for their basic needs. Um, with that being said, in order to get out of this trap, you are, what do you do afterwards? You, you, you leave, you don't have a place to stay, you don't have a job anymore, now you're back at square one. What did I just do? I just wasted a whole bunch of time for nothing. Everybody looks at me and they're like, oh, well, you're going up, you're going up, you got a place to stay now, like, you got your kid back, things are getting better. Yeah, but I just wasted all that time for what? And all those people that are staying there, they're wasting their time for what? They're gonna go back down to square one? And our programs are putting them there. I think that's the thing that we should really talk about. We're paying them to keep, keep our homeless homeless. Um, so whenever you've got somebody coming up here, like Robert, who, yes, he, he doesn't look put together. He doesn't sound put together. The things that he says are not, they're, they're not gonna be polite, because he's from the street, it's a different life. But what he's saying is true. What he's saying is actually happening. Our city dollars are going to people who are taking advantage of, of our unhoused, of our homeless people. And there's no oversight. We're just giving them the money, and we're just like, yeah, cool, that's fine, do what you gotta do. So if we could get some oversight on that, get some enforcement, uh, that would be really awesome, because we're just gonna keep people homeless and keep dishing out money if we don't do something about it. Um, and then once people actually get out of that situation, they're, they're, I'm crashed, man. I'm finally in a spot where I'm, I feel safe, I haven't been safe in I don't know how long. And I am so exhausted, I literally slept 12 hours, got up, fed my son, went back to sleep. And then I slept before I came here, which is why I'm like, not put together right now, my brain is not functioning, because I've finally hit a point where I am safe, and my body is like, just let it go. And now I gotta find a job while I'm in this, in this position of, my muscles hurt, my joints hurt, my body's gone downhill, cause I've been out on the street for I don't know how long. But I have to get a job, and I need to move along, cause, you know, I've got bootstraps that I need to pull up. Um, so I'll stop complaining now, really the biggest thing is, is we need enforcement, we need to stop dishing out money to people who are taking advantage of our homeless people, and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Clerk.
Ken Pasha.
I wanted to ask, Marybel was just a second behind, we're moving really fast tonight. Thank you, Chuck, I just wanted to make sure, you can start me. So, everybody knows, I, I gotta cut a few degrees in communication, so I'm, I'm skilled enough to talk about it. I think one of the interesting things when it comes to communication is that we have the right to say almost anything we want, out here. When you guys are up here, when I'm up here, when the mayor's in her official appearances and so forth, we all have to kinda toe the line and follow the rules, right? Same with work. I go to work, I have to follow the rules, I can't just say whatever I want, the way that I act here, I wouldn't talk to my boss like that, right? That's my boss, that's who signs my checks, we're also a lot more professional with each other than I've experienced here sometimes. More so, those rules need to be followed at all times. Because when somebody breaks them and steps far out of line and does something that we all know is wrong from the start without being told, because we're all capable adults who know how words work, it seems confusing to me that this administration in this city has now dismissed one employee, and I know for a fact that there's something going on with another employee regarding their comments about Charlie Kirk on Facebook. So, that's really none of your business, it really isn't. I asked my job what they thought of my Facebook, and they asked me if I ever put my employer's name on there. Now, I'm not dumb, so they don't care, because this is America, as far as I know, at least in some areas still, right? Now, the confusing part for me, though, is of saying something about a guy who lived his life as a racist, a bigot, a hate monger. You can shake your head all you want, Ward One, everybody with a brain knows I'm, what I'm saying's true. So, let's be clear with each other, you guys know that the N-word is wrong, right? You wouldn't say it in private, you wouldn't say it to your friends, you wouldn't say it to a random stranger, so if you work for the city, why would you say it? Why would you say it at work? Seems confusing to me. It's 2025, does anyone not know the N-word's bad? Is that confusing? Do we need to have a sit-down, maybe some more training? It's ridiculous, these are adults, you're at work. And the idea that somebody is getting dismissed, fired, or being asked to retire, facing long-term suspension over some random Facebook comments that are their absolute right to make, and a guy who used the N-word got somewhere between five and 30 days. Five and 30 days for using a racist slur at work. Does that sound right to you? Where's our, where's our head shakes on that one, Ward One, thanks? I just wanted to check, though, because it seems confusing to me, because this city put real effort into getting rid of a director who'd been here for how long? You know, you guys were friends. So let's be clear, it seems even weirder that one of my friends is now facing possibly losing their job over comments about Charlie Kirk. But those are legal comments. Did I miss something in the city code? Is there something that says no mean words about podcasters who don't work here? On the other hand, I'm 100% sure that there is something in the city policy about racial slurs. So five to 30 days is not only unacceptable, it seems almost weird that Charlie Kirk earns you no job and using racial slurs just gets ya slap on the hand, cause that's what 30 days is, or anywhere between five and 30, right? I mean, if you guys seriously wanna tell me that those two things aren't, they are not equivalent, anyone who thinks they are should meet me outside and we can chat about it, and I don't mean that forcefully, I mean that genuinely. Because you seem confused about how language works. Racist slurs have been wrong for as long as I've been alive and long before that, but unfortunately, it doesn't work that way for a lot of people, it seems. They still feel entitled to that. I wanna call attention to the fact that they just reopened a museum here in town, and I'm gonna make sure I get the name right, because they deserve that, because everyone should go there and go see it, and maybe learn some lessons. Because the new exhibit at the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum explores the race riots here. That is our history here, you don't get to live in Springfield and tell me you don't know racism is wrong. We've killed people over it here. The NAACP was birthed here because of it. And to let somebody work here after using racial slurs and fire people for saying something you don't like about a guy who deserved a lot of harsh words, a lot, not what he got, but he deserved a lot of harsh words, just like anyone out there does when you make yourself a public figure. You don't think I take hits out there? You think everybody's nice to me? That's just what it is, though, that's the position you chose to be in. But I'll tell you what I'll never, ever, 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 ever do is use a racial slur, because that is wrong on every level. There's no justification, especially when you're a city employee who's been here 20-plus years, you know the rules, follow them. But seemingly, you don't have to, seemingly, you can get away with it as long as you do, you know, just some racial slurs, don't say any-
Thank you, sir, next.
Marybel Cruz.
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderwoman Purchase, thank you.
Um, Corporation Counsel, is there something in our policy about that, though?
About?
Using racial slurs like the-
We have an anti-discrimination pol-, uh, it's not a policy, it's our Code of Ordinances and our personnel code. Uh, we have anti-harassment, anti-discrimination language, we also cover that as a topic of discipline in our 24 collective bargaining agreements.
So thank you for clarifying that, and is there, uh, investigation going on for this situation, or has it been taken care of?
I'm not gonna discuss anything publicly, I'm happy to, to talk with you in a setting where we can preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you for that, too, um, because we continue, uh, me, Alderman Williams, and Alderman Gregory continue to get text messages about this situation that took place, and I'm black, so hearing that that word was used, um, it, it's really not sitting well with me. The climate that we're in nationwide, I agree with the mayor, how she has said this has no place here in our city. That word has no place here in our city to be used under no circumstances. And so I think, I, I would, I think all three of us, we would like to meet with you so that we can understand where things are, because we're not able to really answer the community when they say something to us, and I, I don't wanna get anybody in trouble or any retaliation, but there's employees that reach out to us, and we know that there was a meeting that was had and talked about, like, hey, you shouldn't be using this word, but that's not enough. Because if we did it, if we turn around and use that word, it, it would really be an issue, too. So I wanna just make sure that we fully understand, too, when the community is reaching out to us, what can we say to them? Like, what are we allowed to say to them, and it's not me asking for permission, so I wanna be very clear before people start saying, why are you asking for permission? I understand that we have rules and policies in place, but I think it's important for us to know that, and we have to stand for something. Using that word is not acceptable. And it's not acceptable for us to call the other side anything neither, but we have to make sure that we're standing up for ourselves and for our community, too. And these employees are not feeling that comfortable. I think that what is being done is fine, but also when that person is coming back to work, them having to be in a comfortable environment to think that, hey, I'm safe at work, I'm not going to be called that name anymore. So I just wanna ask that, request that we have a meeting soon.
Absolutely, we can meet.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, this, the, both situations, this Charlie Kirk, this local, um, employee situation, um, and the heat, uh, that comes, comes to me as Ward Three Alderman, black man, and my community hears this, and they, they go through all these comparisons about, you know, why you do it this way, but then this way, and this guy can get fired, you know? And they take you through that, I'm, I'm a grown man, and I ran for office knowing, uh, that the mayor wears two hats. Um, she, she, she wears the hat of administration, she has administration, where she's over several directors with several employees, and she also wears a piece of the legislative hat. I know that me as an Alderman, I am involved with legislation. And, and I try to talk to my people and tell them this, you know, I don't have employees that work for me. Yeah, I'm a part of the city, and yeah, I do ordinances, and I, and I do policy and, and different rules and regulations that may impact your life, but I can't argue when, uh, Personnel Director or, or the Corporate Counsel says, well, well, Alderman, I'm not gonna talk about personal issues with you, you're not in that role, you don't know union contracts, you don't know if it's progressive, I don't know enough. A- and I'm saying this on the mic and in public, cause I want people to kinda understand, uh, the position it puts me in. Personally, I have an opinion about it. Personally, I think it's a weak punishment, I, I, you know, but I've been on both sides of the union, too. I've been in the supervisor role as well as employee role, so I see both sides of, of what possibly could be going on here. But what I would say is, if I'm not in charge and have both hats, only can impact where I can impact. But that doesn't mean personally I agree with what this city does and how they behave. And yes, I am a part of the shoe, I'm a part of it, but I'm only one vote out of 10. If I could change things, I would, I can't, so I just do the best I can, and I try to make people understand, you know, um, this is the way it is, this is the way we operate. And in this particular case, what a lot of these folks are mad about with the language, um, isn't any one Alderman's fault, isn't any the Black Caucus' fault, it is, it is what it is. I think all across this country, elected officials have to deal with this, but we have to know our role and where we can. If, if they call the vote, I voted against what happened. I, I'd be a little more firm on the employee, but that's not our role here. Um, I, I, I have my opinion of Charlie Kirk, and I know people's hot, and it's gonna always be that way, but I also know we all have our First Amendment rights. And all we can do is not let no one take yours away. So I'm not trying to take anybody else's away, and I'm also never gonna vote or try to punish or be punitive when somebody else expresses theirs, whether I'm agreeing with them or disagreeing with them. So I just think sometime we need to slow down and, and think about these things, but we all have our own opinions, and I said this last week, and we all have our own rights. And the worst thing we can do is stop communicating and deteriorate, a- a- and, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Gregory.
You know, I, I'm gonna pass, I spoke last week on this, and, 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 um, well, yeah, well. You, you, you know, I agree, and, and, you know, we've been there before with, with, where we've, you know, had to deal with some racial tensions in the city. We, we've seen, you know, people use nasty words, not only, um, against black people, but against gay people and on and on, and, and that gentleman had to, well, not gentleman, that man had to be fired, and, and so, you know, going forward, I think it's important for this council, as we said, to, to, to make sure and realize that this stuff is real. You know, we, you know, I just read before and watched a video before I got here of a young man, you know, on his way to NFL, kill himself off of a lie, off of a setup. Ruined his whole career, just cause he was a black man, driving a nice car, man. So these things are real, um, you know, racism is real in our city, I mean, you can just look at the comments, anytime something, um, about people of color comes across, that, that it is in our community, and, you know, in 2020, we passed a anti-racism and, um, some other things, uh, ordinance, uh, resolution with Black Lives Matter, and that was a different council, and I think this council, we, we, we have to look at bringing that back and, and, and making sure that we know that in our city, and people who work for us, that, that this council is not gonna stand for that. The mayor's not gonna stand for that, and we, we're gonna push forward, do your jobs, go home, um, if, if we don't like each other, or don't like people just because of color, and, um, you know, a- as black people, you know, we, we, we take stuff like this serious, because we know the real, we know it's, it's, it's real, like, you know, when I, when I, when we attack issues up here, let us believe it's people that hurl these same words, words at us, I'm still looking for the guy who called himself looking for me in the grocery store, I'm looking for him to this day. But we get those type of messages and threats, and, um, eye looks every day, just, just because of who we are and what we stand for, so, um, these things are real, and, uh, I hope that we don't have to revisit it, but I know we will, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, too, I would ask that, as a council, that we come together and we stand together to let people in this community know that that's not, that's not what we are tolerating.
I agree with you.
I don't wanna be emotional up here, but I'm really angry at this point. What we seeing going on in our country, what I see going on back at home, and then to see that we have somebody in our, within our departments, using that word. It's bullshit. We need to stand together. We need to stand together and let people know that this will not be tolerated, and it's not okay. I know all of us care about our ward, I know that we don't wanna see this, so I'm asking for all of us to come together. If we can't control what's going on in Chicago, and we all know I work in Chicago, so I'm seeing everything that's going on right now. I'm from Maywood, Broadview is 10 minutes away, and I'm seeing everything that's going on. I hope and pray that our officers are not pepper sprayed or something like that doesn't happen down here, but we do need to do something. And I'm asking that we all come together.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Clerk.
Marybel Cruz-Hine. I'm sorry?
Oh, Alderwoman Purchase.
I just wanted to say real quickly.
I didn't see your thing, I'm sorry.
I, and I apologize, Marybel, give me just two seconds, I promise.
Sorry, Marybel.
Alderwoman Purchase, um, thank you for saying that. I, I don't want this to be just three members of this council that have to speak like on, in disgust on that, I wasn't here last week, I, I, couldn't say anything then, but that's not acceptable behavior in anywhere, in, on our streets, from our employees, in our hearts, in our minds, it's never acceptable. And I want you to know, I mean, I will, I will, whatever you wanna do, i- if there's something we wanna get put together, um, to make this firmer and, and united, absolutely, I'm here with you, because you're right, that's never allowed, it's never acceptable, and it's never appropriate. We, we can't control a lot of stuff, but we can absolutely speak to that.
Alderwoman, no, Triana. Thank you, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to what Alderwoman Conley said. It sounds like we don't have a zero tolerance policy for racism, but we certainly should. So I'm happy to work with the other members of the council to figure out a way to put that in practice. I know with union agreements, it's tough, but otherwise, yeah, we should definitely have zero tolerance. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. We can have somebody help you pass those around.
Also, Sarah. This here, but because everything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Did you hear that, clerk? Before we, oh, go ahead.
Well, um, ah, man, I would like to start with a moment of silence for the 2,700 families that have been completely erased from the Civil Registry in Palestine. Okay, well, as you know, the Committee to Promote Indigenous Peoples' Day submitted the application for a proclamation of the Springfield City website to proclaim every second Monday of October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. What is it to be indigenous? Of relating to or descended from our earliest known inhabitants of a place, and especially the place that was colonized, indigenous peoples' cultures. The term indigenous derives from the Latin word indígena, meaning sprung from the land or native. It was first used in English in the early 17th century to refer to individuals or groups to who originated from a particular region or territory. I've said this before, this is from Bookpedia, not every indigenous people look like me. This is indigenous peoples of Africa. The history of indigenous African people spans thousands of years, includes a complex variety of cultures, languages, and political systems. Indigenous African cultures have existed since the ancient times, with some of the earliest evidence of human life in the continent, continent coming from the stone walls, rock art, dating back hundreds of thousands of years. The earliest written records of African history came from the ancient Egyptian and Ubyan texts, which date back around 30, 3,000 B.C. These texts provide insight into the societies of the time, including religious beliefs, political systems, and trade networks. In the centuries that followed, various other African civilizations rose to prominence, such as the Kingdom of Kush, northern Sudan, and the powerful empires of Ghana, Mali, and Soha in West Africa. In the late 15th century, European colonization began, leading to the enslavement of millions of Africans and the displacement of many indigenous cultures. Since the end of World War II, indigenous African cultures have been in a state of constant flux, struggling to maintain their identity to, in the face of westernization and globalization. In recent years, there has been a resurgence of interest in tradition cultures, traditional cultures, and many African countries have taken steps to preserve and promote their indigenous heritage. Indigenous people of Italy. It's vital to recognize the presence of indigenous communities who have shaped the country's cultural tapestry for centuries. These groups have left an indelible mark of Italy's language traditions and way of life, like the extruscan, which I recently learned. One of the most notable groups who emerged in the pre-Roman Italy was the extruscan. This civilization would flourish between the 8th century, 3rd century B.C. Left an enduring legacy of Italian art, culture, and religion. The extruscan developed a distinctive alphabet, practiced advanced metalworking, pottery techniques, and built sophisticated cities like Tarchenia, Cerretti, often referring as tomb cities due to their elaborate underground tombs. We see the influence of the extruscan in the adoption of Roman culture and language and even the establishment of Roman Republic. Going forward, for you to be born today, I've said this for 12 previous generations back, you need a sum total of 4,094 ancestors over the last 400 years. So I want you to think about you, for you to be born, think for a moment, how many struggles, how many battles, how many difficulties, how much sadness, how much happiness, how many love stories, how much expression of hope for the future did your ancestors have to endure for you to exist at this very moment? What is your legacy? A lifetime reputation could be determined within an hour. Indigenous Peoples' Day is not just for me, but it's for you too. It is an invitation to get to know your ancestors, your history, to learn from one another, to heal, drive in ways that never thought of before. It represents all of us, our forgotten history, our culture. Proclaim Indigenous Peoples' Day, not just for me, but for you. I wish you all so much love, freedom and liberation, free Palestine, free Congo, free Sudan, free your minds.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michelle Cruz Heine. Michelle Cruz Heine.
Hi, um, this is actually my first time speaking with you guys. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. T. Busher at the 1908 Three Hot Days in Summer event. I was thrilled to hear that the city wanted to write injustices in history by honoring its black community and telling their history. I was overjoyed when I received the response that educating Springfield residents wasn't with, sorry, educating Springfield residents about this in schools was being addressed as well. I'm slightly confused how these sentiments don't extend to indigenous populations and the indigenous history in Springfield, Illinois. City Council has voted against Indigenous Peoples' Day twice. Just last week, Alderman Brad Carlson, I believe it was, attempted to suppress an indigenous speaker who was invited to city, speak at city council by Alderman, sorry, by Alderman Jennifer, Jennifer Nitradano. Thank you so much for respecting his time, even though yours was definitely not respected. If y'all would like to take a recess to discuss where you all sit on BIPOC matters, feel more than welcome. Alderman Brad Carlson definitely showed his enthusiasm, enthusiasm about that last week. Speaking of city council, being on one page, having an entire argument and disagreement, sorry, I get nervous. Anyway, having an entire argument and disregarding a woman when she's speaking to you is embarrassing. You showed that you don't value your own systems, you don't value your own time, and you have no faith in your fellow alderpersons. You're unable to discuss these matters in private, instead, you'll make it very public, very embarrassing display. It's especially embarrassing when we have new residents, and that was their first introduction to city council. I recommend that you follow your own initial proceed, internal procedures and vote on rules pertaining to presentations rather than arguing in front of all of Springfield residents. While we're on the topic of how the city council conducts itself, I'd like to touch on the fact that the city claims to want to hear from residents while actively suppressing people's ability to comment on posts, ignoring invitations and conveniently scheduling conflicting events. Worse, making those events specific to certain wards without any broadcasting. I'd like to note that you, that had you been at the police brutality meeting, you'd have known that bringing the whole community together and broadcasting events was very vital to maintaining open communication and dialogue. Sorry, I have about two minutes. While keeping on the topic of open dialogue, let's talk about police in the city. The police personnel that went, that want real dialogue have showed up. That was at last Thursday for the police brutality. Thank you to all of the officers who showed up in good faith and had conversations with us. The ones who claimed that droplets of water are weapons and claimed that Tiara Standage should not be a board member representing the city, representing the residents of the city, did not show up. This comes from the same department that found her perfectly capable of working for them and were happy to use her free labor had she granted it. Asking someone to take on work without compensation is free labor. Educating others without compensation is free labor. Many are more than willing to do it as long as it is on their terms, and they have real backing to ensure things are successful. The charade that happened three weeks ago was shameful and showed the true feelings of many SPD officers while they claimed to want to bridge the gap with residents. One last request when it comes to police officers, please train them to stop lying. I had one officer tell me that driving without a per, I'm sorry, it's DMV and your officers. I had a public official tell me that driving without a permit at 21 was not an issue. I got stopped, and the officer who stopped me kept telling me that it was a horrible way to start a driving record. He scared me so bad I had an asthma attack and started crying. Only then did he explain that all I had to do was go get a permit and go to the city. I had another officer who stopped me tell me that, on a voice message, because he couldn't get a hold of me, that he was going to mark it as a hit and run. When I got there crying, he, he asked me if I was okay and what was wrong. I told him that I was scared that he was going to mark the, the accident as a hit and run. He then told me that he wouldn't have done that because we already shared, sorry, I'm running out of time, I'd already shared my insurance, and I already shared my phone number with the person. So, probably be at another meeting, but please, you have some good officers, but for the rest of them, don't make them do this to citizens. How are we supposed to understand back and?
Thank you, ma'am.
Just believe in them when they're going to lie to us so blatantly.
Thank you. Clerk.
Tiara Standage.
As we know, I also, I said some bad words at a protest about police officers last year, and man, there's been a lot of consequences because of that. I've had to sit here at city council and watch a Netflix documentary about myself. I've been excluded from groups like the ACLU and, well, not excluded from the groups, but excluded from meetings with the SPD chief because of those bad words that I said about the police. So I think it's disgusting that one of your employees, Mayor, can call a black employee the N-word with a hard R, and I hear five to 30 days, that's crazy. I've been dealing with this for over a year, and I meant what I said at that protest. So I, I don't know, maybe I need to organize the people of this city again to make some noise so that we can call for that person's job, because I will find out who it is. You know, it's not being made public information, but that person shouldn't have a job. You know, you yourself said that there's no place for that in this city, and I agree. So I think that that person needs to be fired. I'm publicly calling for their job for all the black people in this community. That's not freedom of speech, that's hate speech. Okay, now to what I wrote down. Also, there was no public post on the city's page about anybody calling anybody N-word, but I seen public posts about people losing their job over Charlie Kirk, so I just wondered what the difference was. Why, why isn't it being made public that this is what the black people in this city have to deal with when they want to work for this city? I just need this council to know, especially right now, more than ever, that white silence is violence. So thanks for the ones that did speak up against this. The people of Springfield deserve, deserve leadership that listens, not leadership that labels. Recently, this chamber became a stage for division, where a public servant used their position to brand me as anti-police. But what you're hearing from me is not hatred, it's heartbreak. It's not anti-police, it's pro-accountability. Because when citizens speak about safety, equity, or harm, they are not attacking law enforcement. They are pleading for protection that includes everyone. And when that truth is dismissed or disrespected, it shows us that the city's problem isn't anti-police voices, it's anti-accountability leadership. Too often, Springfield has chosen comfort over courage. We see it when black and brown residents are overpoliced and underheard. We see it when those demanding change are painted as the problem instead of being recognized as the ones trying to solve the problem. And we see it in a culture that too often feels anti-black, anti-brown, and anti-inclusive. But Springfield has the power to choose a new story, one rooted in truth, inclusion, and courage. That starts with acknowledging our full history, especially as we approach Indigenous Peoples' Day. This day is not symbolic, it is sacred. It is a recognition of the first people in this land whose wisdom, resilience, and suffering laid the foundation for our city. To continue ignoring or minimizing Indigenous Peoples' Day is to choose ignorance over integrity. You cannot claim inclusion while erasing the very people who first called this land their home. In Spring, if Springfield wants to call itself a moral or pure city, it must begin by cleansing the impurity with its, within its institutions, the bias, the fear, the exclusion. Purity is not about image, it's about integrity. And integrity means doing what's right, especially when it's not convenient or not popular. So tonight, we ask you, stop using power to silence those who seek justice, start using it to build trust. Recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day not as a token gesture, but as a true step towards reconciliation, healing, and equity. The application is already in, we just need this council to approve it and proclaim it. Springfield's strength has never came from authority, it always has come from the people, from those who love this city enough to demand that it finally loves all of us back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy Walton.
Okay, all right. This is the city's policy on violence in the workplace. It is the policy of the city of Springfield to provide a safe working environment for employees to minimize their likelihood of violence in the workplace. Through early intervention acts or threats of violence, explicit or implied, will not be tolerated. Employees found in violation of this policy will be subject to disciplinary actions up to and including discharge, and the appropriate law enforcement authorities will be notified if necessary. Specifically, the city prohibits conduct and behavior which intimidates, harasses, interferes, or threatens a fellow employee's or their safety. First of all, this policy applies because the Springfield Police Department, the community is their workplace. We are their employers. This can be implemented. And Mayor, I don't know if you get it or not, but you're just as culpable as the department because when your chief of police used 50 officers that didn't show up to the town hall in the same support to intimidate an individual that would not stand down from him, you told him, I got your back. Which means you're telling him, any threat that he makes and then takes action on because he threatened not to meet her at that town hall meeting, and he didn't come, which means he acted on his threats, and you're aware of it. And any person that fails to perform their duties are liable to the same actions. You and your department are criminal right now, Mayor. So let me just say like they say to us when they feel like we're criminals, you have to stay lucky. We only got to get lucky one time. It's time for you to get yourself together, Mayor, and figure out what you're going to do with your department. Because right now, the message that you're sending to the community is, oh, yeah, beat the blacks, kidnap the immigrants, and rape the minorities of all their freedoms, family, and comfortabilities. See, we tired for real, and we tired of you looking at us with that blank face and saying It's time to get it together, because everybody ain't scared. It's time to get it together, 'cause everybody ain't scared. So the intimidation tactics and all of the other things that your chief got going on and participating in that you're not properly dealing with, once again, a couple of weeks ago, I called for a formal meeting with the organizations, the mayor, the corporate council, the city clerk, and any aldermen that wanna attend. We do expect to hear something, because we're not gonna stop coming. And to all the aldermen that did show their support and to everyone on the board that is making an effort to see that it is something wrong and do something about it, I'll come in, y'all. Thank y'all for listening.
Matt Shear. Matt Shear. Veronica Glass. Veronica Glass. James Johnson. James Johnson. The James Johnson.
Day seven of government shutdown. There's people struggling. There's people mad. There's people hurting. There's people angry. Now, mayor, I'm the one that's been around here for fifteen-plus years. And your administration, your police chief, and your fire chief are the only ones out of the last fifteen years that haven't came to me and said, "Hey, James, here's my personal cell number. Give me a call if you need anything." The only group out of all these years. And then I heard somebody say, "They begging you to speak up about what's going on in our state." I'm not up here to beg. I ain't begging for nothing. But I am gonna talk about this N-word being used at city department. And so y'all know, I know who it is. It ain't no secret. So alderman, I want you to ask the question to Legal, because that man over there, his... his brother had a news pit on his desk back in the day. And I... I wanna know, what's the rules now? What's the law? 'Cause nobody asked that last week and I ain't sat still and I ain't sitting still listening and waiting no more. So I ran up here to drop this bomb today. We're not gonna keep pitting up with people talking to our people that way. We're not. You think them the only angry people, mayor? You're wrong. Mr. Pasha said it greatly last week, 'cause he ain't the only one. Now, I've been the peaceful one for the last fifteen to twenty years, trying to bring the community together. But since your... your people don't wanna communicate with me, guess what? Figure out what that means. But I will say thank you to the police, 'cause see, this side, war two, we just had another homicide. And then last week, there was gunshots. But where was Faith Coalition? Did they... did they pop out there and... And let me mention something. This ain't the first time the police department refused to meet with some people in our community. Ask Sheila about it. She'll tell you who they were. So this ain't nothing new to me, that's why I ain't getting excited about it. But here's the rule. What we're not gonna put up, mayor... And I'm gonna lay the law down, because if we're gonna do a peaceful protest, we're gonna do a peaceful protest outside. But if we go inside, it ain't nothing peaceful about it, and I'm putting it out there. If I have to come through them doors, I'm gonna tell you right now, I come from that generation. If we come through them doors, we gonna tear up some stuff. Don't make us have to do that in your community. Because when we ain't heard up here, we'll make you hear us out there. Now, you can have your... your meetings and you can call whoever and all them little groups you wanna meet with to determine what's gonna happen in this community, you ain't calling the right people, 'cause they ain't gonna make their decision what happens here. I... I suggest you being some of this... some of the gap with the community that's hurting the most, because they can do the most damage. And these young people, when they go, they gonna go. They gonna go up. Now, what we're not gonna put up with is police officers, because you're gonna get my attention then, putting their knees on anybody's back or neck. And we're not gonna be grabbing on any women in our community. If your officers don't have enough training for that, they do not need to be on our police force. But grabbing women, and this is law, and I'm gonna stand on business. If it comes to me that your officers are snatching women of any color by their hair, I'm gonna move silently. So I just want you to know that. Now, if you think something go on in this community I don't know, you're wrong. And I hope you decide that whoever this dude is, and I ain't gonna boil his name up right now, but he needs to go. And if you're the mayor of the Capitol, you need to stand up and say...
Thank you, sir.
...to the governor.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, mayor.
Stand up and say something.
Alderwoman Purchase signed up to speak, ma'am, sir.
James, you... James, you asked the question and you had came in just a little late.
I know I did.
Okay.
But I seen everything.
Okay, so did you... did you hear the... I asked, uh, Corporation Council, did we have a policy in place? Did you...
No, I missed that part.
Corporation Council, can you say it one more time? 'Cause I feel like it needs to come from you and not us interpreting what you said.
We have an anti-discrimination, anti-harassment policy or ordinance in our city code. In addition, we address that in our various union contracts.
Mayor, could we put something out through the communications director just to let people know, since this is a hot topic, um, just out for the public to know what that is and the verbiage of it?
Mm-hmm. We can, uh, also...
How come we can't get the verbiage now?
I think the rules are all...
Well, wait, 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 everybody.
Alderwoman Purchase has the floor.
I'm... I'm asking so that it can be visibly seen and people can constantly see it too if they have questions. Not everybody is watching tonight or not everybody has access to see this. So I'm asking that we put it out through the communica... uh, the mayor's communications director so everyone can understand what the policy is.
Yeah, and we'll reference the code so they can see it in the code, so it's not... I don't think it's made up.
Okay. And then, James, thank you for your support, but don't come through these doors trying to do anything. We... we need to keep our community together.
No.
We can do a peaceful...
I ain't coming through these.
Well, I heard what you just said, and you know that that can be taken as a threat. So I'm... I'm asking you, we... all three of us is asking you, and we be upset with you sometimes when you came up here blaming us. We understand... we understand, but we're asking that you do not come through these doors trying to do anything.
I think I said peaceful protest.
You did, but you said if I gotta come through these doors, it's gonna be different.
On a peaceful protest.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying.
We don't protest, we speak our minds up here.
Okay.
So the only thing I'm gonna say now is, you're the mayor of the city of the Capitol for the state of Illinois. They need to hear from you, 'cause if you don't speak against what's being said, you're a part of it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Matt Shear walked in.
Matt Shear. Matt Shear.
Hi, how's everyone doing? It's a little tense in here, huh? So, uh, if it did not get disseminated to you from Tim Griffin, uh, one of the things that I would like to talk about tonight, just the only one pretty much, is email addresses. If I can see a show of hands of all of you, does anyone use a Springfield dot IL dot US email address to conduct city business?
Sir, you need to point your questions to the chairwoman, please. Thank you, sir.
Is it Lakeisha?
No.
You need to talk to the chairwoman, please. No, I'm the chairwoman, I'm sitting at the mayor's chair.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, other than yourself and... and myself as a city employee and Council Mordock, uh, and Clerk Redpath, can I... can I... am I allowed to ask? Can I see a show of hands?
You can make a blanket statement, but the code says that you address the chairperson, whomever that is at that meeting.
Indeed, which is you, correct?
Correct, sir.
Correct. So, other than those addressed currently of the council, am I allowed to ask who uses...
Ask what they don't have to. It's just to me. It's a back and forth with us here, so...
Sure, okay. So, what I would like to ask you, Madam Mayor, is...
Yes, sir.
City emails, Springfield dot IL dot US email addresses are provided to all the alderpersons? If requested? Is that... is that correct?
Continue, sir.
Uh, I'm... I'm...
This is your five minutes to address the chairperson, so you have three minutes left, so keep... keep your comments going.
Am I... am I allowed to ask you a question? Will you respond if I ask you a question? No? Okay, fair enough, okay. Well, then we'll have unanswered questions, that's fine. It is my understanding that Springfield dot IL dot US email addresses are provided to all the alderpersons, but are not required. I would like to publicly bring up this question because it relates to FOIA information. Uh, I'm not sure if anyone has ever tried to FOIA Google, Gmail, Yahoo, Hotmail, whatever... whatever you wanna call it, any email provider that is private. If you are not a government entity, you are not allowed, in my experience, to obtain these documents. It has to come from someone like you, Madam Mayor, a government entity. With the council conducting potentially city business on private email servers that are, it seems, un-FOI-able, I find this to be a very intriguing aspect of open government, which you have done a... a very good job of creating a better environment for. I will say, under previous administrations, my experience, you have done an excellent job of creating a better environment for that. But I would like to see maybe a little bit more change. So, again, I can't ask questions, but I would say, hey, guys, why don't we use Springfield dot IL dot US email addresses? I mean, me as a Springfield firefighter, you can FOIA anything that I do on my city email in my official capacity as a firefighter, but I can't see anything that any of you do on your private email while you conduct city business. Every time I log into my city email, it says you can be up to and including fired for misusing this, right? Shouldn't all of the council be held to the same standard? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, the ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you.